Good evening, welcome to the October meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman. We'll have a roll call.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
And Locke.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, would you start it off with a prayer?
Everybody's there. Tell the Father I come at this hour as humble as I can be before the throne of grace. I come, oh Lord, just thanking thee, because thou have been so good to me. Lord, you have blessed everyone on the sound of my weak voice, both individually and collectively, and that's enough just to say thank you, sir. We thank your God for this meeting that we about to participate in. Ask you that we all be on one accord. Bless every department head, mayor, all the aldermen that's collected here today. Just be with Lord, Lord, and guide us. We need you right now, Father. Not only here in the city of Bastrop, we need you throughout the land. There's so much going on this day and time, Lord. We need you to just touch it, Lord. One touch from you will make everything all right. Bless us this evening, and whatever we do here, Father, that it be decent and in order and pleased under thee. Thee in all blessings, we thank you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Moore.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Any public comments as related to the items on the agenda? Approval of previous minutes, regal meeting September 12th, 2013.
May I move for approval of those minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All for?
Ah.
Against? Motion passes. Financial Committee report. Mr. Shaw.
Yes. I move that we accept the report for September.
A second.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, we'll vote on resolution 131530, bills and claims for the month of September. All for?
Ah.
Against? Motion pass. Chief, Fire Chief, Chief Montgomery. Resolution 131531, a resolution commending Richard McDonald upon retirement as captain with the Barris Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, Mac Jones, uh, wasn't, is not here today. Uh, he's a 25-year veteran. Uh, as a matter of fact, his dad did over 30 years here at the fire department. So it's been a real family tradition, and, and he served the department well. And needless to say, it's been a long time since the Barris Fire Department didn't have a McDonald. But, uh, we hate to lose him, and, uh, I do humbly accept this in his absence. And, uh, I guess he started his retirement early.
Okay, Jimmy Davis.
Mayor, we need a vote.
Oh, we need a vote.
We need a motion.
I make a motion, Mayor. Second.
We got a motion and a second on resolution 131531, and that's retirement of Mr. McDonald. Any discussion? All for?
Ah.
Against? Motion passes. And congratulations. Mr. Taylor, Jimmy Davis, I'm sorry, Taylor Made Insurance.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council.
Good afternoon.
First of all, I would like to say I appreciate the opportunity. And very business friendly to local businesses. Parish wouldn't be very happy with that. I mean, especially if we had an opportunity to spend that money locally. of the city of Bastrop. I met with him and a member of his Businesses have to pay taxes on all their revenue that they receive. So I approached the mayor and, uh, one of his board members. Staff members said, but they're doing such a to me, not very business friendly to a local Gallagher did all the legwork. Well, let me explain something, and it shows business, all the legwork is, is there was nothing but one sheet of paper that we need
Is, you know, get bids for various services that are provided, including insurance.
The thing about bids is you have to understand, if I work for the same company that you work for, I can't bid against you because it's gonna be the same bid. That, that was my point. I can't bid against Gallagher because he represents the same companies. Now, um, Gallagher has been ensuring Bastrop for all some bids from some companies that he may not have represented, it probably would have been higher. And that's why I did not submit a bid for that, because I know that the companies that he represents are the lowest-priced companies, and that's why we wanted to keep the prices
Okay, Mr.
My whole thing is, I would that you would take a look at spending money locally, if at all possible, especially if the product is the same, there's no difference. I mean, it just make logical sense to me. Maybe I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, excuse me.
No, you're right, you're right.
Okay, first thing, Mr. Davis, we're tax exempt, so no matter what we pay, it won't be any tax.
No, I don't pay taxes.
No, you won't even pay taxes on what we give you.
But I will pay it to the parish. Every, everything.
buyers from, the people that purchase things from you. Well, when we buy anything, we don't pay any tax.
Required by law that I pay taxes. I mean, I don't know any business that don't pay taxes on revenue.
No, I'm not saying you don't pay taxes. I'm saying you don't pay taxes on the money you get from the city, because the city will give you no taxes, so you have none to pay. Next, and I will give you my word, that between now and October 1st, that if you get bids, we will give you the job, especially if they are loyal. Personally, and I told each councilman, you know, I don't feel right giving the insurance
all the buildings, go take all the pictures, you don't have to do that once, you got it in your computer.
Okay.
But I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Davis, I, I think what the council is saying, uh, since we already have insurance for this year, maybe next year, we would consider doing business locally.
That would be great.
Okay. Resolution 131532, a resolution authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for rehabilitation of the wind cone and installation of segment circle at the Moraus Memorial Airport. Selden?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Uh, what this is, is the state is wanting to, uh, give us a grant to basically rehabilitate our wind cone and to also relocate it. And also, the part of that, uh, grant would be for putting in a segment and circle, which will kind of bring the wind cone up to standard that the state wants to see at the airport. And, uh, I believe the total for that grant was 23,000, with the maximum the state would pay, and that should cover all the investments we've gotten so far. That should cover everything that, uh, they want us to accomplish with that grant. With the exception of, they would like for the city of Bastrop to provide the land clearing and the seeding for the area where the wind cone will be relocated too. And, uh, this won't be a serious, uh, land clearing, because most of it has been cleared in the past, it was brush and shrubbery that would need to be removed and everything leveled out before they could begin their work on it, before contractors could be in their electrical work and such. And this will also tie that wind cone into our runway lighting circuit and, uh, it will bring the lighting on it as well. And so if the council and mayor are interested in accepting this grant, we'd sure like to do that out of there for it.
Mr. Brown.
Does he want to have any questions? Yes, sir.
Who would do the preliminary work on, on, on that reseeding? Would someone from the city?
The city would have
The city?
Have to do that portion of it.
Okay, no outside contractor that would have to come in?
Um, not unless we chose to hire an outside contractor to perform that work, but that, the cost of doing that work would be upon the city.
But city workers can do that work.
But I feel like we've probably got the equipment and manpower necessary to do it.
Uh, Mr. Brown, what about, uh, what about maintaining it? Is that be the responsibility of the airport?
Yes.
Or the city?
It would be the responsibility, well, airport and city is pretty much all the same thing.
Okay.
Uh, but every grant that we receive, uh, from the airport, uh, for the airport from the state or from the federal level, we're still required to maintain those, uh, grants.
But no restrictions as you gotta wait so long to cut it and all that?
As far as...
Well, we got, we got some other things, we got in too with these, with our signage around town.
Mm-hmm.
They had a lot of stipulations on it, and I was just wondering.
It's nothing like that.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Normally with these grants, there's a percentage that the city has to do, and the seeding and the clearing would be our percentage, and the grant, that's, everything is paid for.
Um, if I, if I can add one other thing, this is outside of our normal capital improvement plan that we submit to the state and federal government every year, and that's why they're asking for more participation, because this is strictly a state-only grant.
May I move if, uh, exception, uh, exception of the resolution 131532?
Right. We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All for?
Ah.
Against? Motion pass. Thank you.
Councilor, thank you.
Resolution 131533, a resolution declaring adjudicated property located at 427 Kamau, formerly owned by John P. Anderson, no longer needed for, uh, for public use, authorizing the sale of the property by obtaining sealed bids, authorizing the employment of Philip Lester, attorney-at-law, to provide the legal service for the sale of the property for the minimum bid of the appraised amount, uh, parish and city taxes owed, cost of appraisal, and legal services in accordance with the law. Ms. Goldman?
I'm not sure if y'all remember, um, I know the mayor's aware of Kamau Street, there used to be a piece of property just before you got to the Dito Building.
Mm-hmm.
It used to have an old school bus
Right.
in front of it. Well, that property was duly received in 2003. Um, Mr. Anderson is deceased, but the time lapse over the five years is well over that, and so, um, we can bid it out, and we have had two people that is interested in purchasing that. The people, one is a lady that lives out of state, but her family owns some property right around it, and has for several years. And I think another one may be pinned to the original owner too. So, um, we would ask, um, y'all to entertain the court, pass, and just so we can maybe get it back to the tax road, it puts some taxes.
I so move.
Second. We got a motion, second. Any discussion? All for?
Ah.
Against? As have it. Resolution 131534, a resolution declaring surplus property vacant lot located at the corner of South Marcus and West Hickory, Bastrop, Louisiana, no longer needed for public use, authorizing the sale of the property by obtaining sealed bids, authorizing the employment of Philip Lester, attorney-at-law, to provide the, the legal services for the sale of the property for the minimum bid of the appraised amount, cost of appraisal, and legal services in accordance with the law. Ms. Goldman?
We had a gentleman that actually owns some property, um, close to it. This property here, is it an Exxon station?
It used to be Exxon Station.
It's behind that.
Okay.
On Marcus and Hickory. The city of, I don't remember how we obtained it, but we, we did. It's two lots there. We got it for another housing project, and that program didn't really go through. So we've just had that land. Well, this gentleman here is interested in purchasing it, and he come to talk to the mayor about it. And so it, it is our land, it's not judicated, it's, it's been ours for a while, and we just don't know, really know what we could do with it, so we thought we might sell it and put it back on the tax road, if that's what y'all's wishes are. He's very interested in it, so.
I make that motion, Mayor.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second to declare the property as a surplus. Any discussion? All for?
Ah.
Against? Motion passes. Resolution 131555, a resolution of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Barris to appoint Beth Waxman, partner Waxman III, as consultant for labor compliance, EEO, Section 3, for the EDA improvement and water and sewer improvements in the industrial park as per the term of the written agreement present. Ms. Goldman?
Now, this is on an industrial park grant. Uh, we received actually two grants on that project. One is with the state, one is with the federal. According to the federal guidelines, whenever you spend that type of money, you have to have somebody that's certified in dealing with the EEOC. All that really means is that the contractors or in their subcontractors, they have to be, uh, labeled a, a certain description, if they're gonna be welders or operators, there is a fee for those particular positions that the state, um, Department of Labor says you must pay those people in the range of that. She has to go in there and look at all those payroll records to be sure that we are in compliance with those federal laws and state laws. Um, Ms. Waxman has worked, um, I know y'all are familiar with Robbie Waxman's our consultant for years, she's a partner of, of that, and that's what she works on, and that's all she's gonna work on this project. She's gonna sign off on that we're in compliance, and, um, she'll take each payroll and do that. And then once she signs off on it, then we're, we're good to go to get our money reimbursed back from the federal. And this is a requirement that is a must. We, we don't have a choice but to contract this out.
I so move.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All for?
Ah.
Against? As have it. Discussion, discussion, action, bid for hay cutting at the industrial park. And again, Ms. Goldman.
Um, Mayor, we went out for bids, um, for this, to people to cut the hay. Um, our previous one had it, wasn't able to keep it up. They will be doing the industrial park in some areas around the airport. This saves us from having to mow it. Um, and we, we just got one bid in, and it's from a Mr. Calvin Sistrant. He's a local person here in Bastrop, and his bid is 175 per round bale of hay and 125 per rectangular bale of hay. Um, he's required to have insurance, and we'll make sure that he does that. But we would like for y'all to consider granting this and giving the mayor permission to sign the contract with.
I make that motion, Mayor.
A second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just to clarify one thing, those prices are what he's gonna pay us.
Right.
What happens when he cuts? He'll call and say we cut, then we send somebody out, used to be the mayor, and verify that they cut it, and then he gives us ever how many bales it, it was. And then we, he'll bring us the check and we write a receipt, so.
Okay.
That's a win- That's a win-win deal. Not only does, uh, we get paid, we get paid for the hay, we don't have to cut the industrial park.
Cutting, that's it.
Okay. Okay, did we get a vote?
I mean, we got a vote.
Okay. All for?
Uh.
Against? Most, eyes have it. Okay. Now, appoint amendment to the Bastrop Historical District. I would like to reappoint Ms. D Tubbs. Her time is running out and we just wanna place her back on. She's been doing a fine job in the historical district.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All for?
Uh.
Against? Motion passes. Okay, appoint amendment to the Bastrop Planning and Enthoning Commission. We have lost a member and I would like to appoint Mr. Charles Peterson.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All for?
Uh.
Against? Motion pass. Now, I need to ask for a motion to expand the agenda to approve liquor license renewal.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. I guess to expand, we got half a roll call.
We can. Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
Okay. Chief Black?
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, recommend the following establishments for renewal of their liquor license for the year twenty fourteen. Pinky's Quick Stop, located ten thirteen A ramp, the retail dealer of premises only. Light Aid, seven twenty-seven North Washington Street, retail dealer of premises only. Specialty Bakery and Spirits, nineteen twenty-three North Wash- Retail dealer of premises only. Wild Greens, uh, nineteen thirty East Madison Avenue, retail dealer of premises only.
Could I get a?
I make that motion.
Yeah.
Hours this year, uh, from six PM to eight PM on October thirtieth.
Ms. Ms. Goldman actually wanted to say that, uh, we should have some new police cars in there going to pick them up. This will be the first cars we've, I guess, received in four years, so. You will start seeing the police force coming back up today.
How many cars are there, Mayor?
If you notice the chief heard that part about his cars.
How many cars are there?
Well, we have three.
Three.
Okay. Okay. Any other business to be brought for the Marion Board of Alderman? Could I get a motion to a jury?
Yeah, I make that motion. Second.